Last time I looked, it was sixteen to seven for the liberals coming from the east this way. All the other parties have nothing. So that's the problem.
I didn't think they could release any information until after the election polls are closed because of they did it before and they ran into problems, but obviously.
Cause they're showing a bunch of seats out of New Brunswick in the east and they're showing accounts for liberals, conservative NDP and all that.
And I don't understand that really, like for the east side of the country, why they go with the liberals. The liberals screwed them so many times.
And they give them lots of unemployment.
They still go back.
Well, we throw your comments to the public record. We are recording.
So we should yell out.
Seven?
What are you?
Seven.
Oh, is it? I'm sorry. It's seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Thank you, Judy. Any additions to the agenda? If not, somebody wish to move it. Judy moves the agenda. Okay, any discussion on Judy's motion? Right now, I'll call the questions in favor. Posed, it's cleared. Yeah, so we're missing a couple councillors. Will's away, he's not feeling good. Cole's working and Barb's in Edmonton at a function up there, so. Anyway, we'll move on to the council meeting minutes of April the fourteenth. Any errors, missions, questions?
Make the motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Okay, Lyle moves the minutes. Any discussion on Lyle's motion? Right now, call the question those in favor. Posed, it's carried. Thank you. Moving on to the Shunook Arch Regional Library System Annual Report. If everybody have an opportunity to read through it. Okay, if not, we will, if there's no questions, we can move on to the Kool-Aid drinking event that's going on in.
The Shunook Arch also had the board report.
Oh, I'm sorry. They had the both together.
Yeah, there was two reports there.
Oh, maybe I didn't read the board report.
They had their April board report as well.
Okay, sorry. No, that's great. So yeah, there's the two of them there, so. Thank you. Then the next one is Karma Gaze withdrawal from the
See.
From Seewa, but yet they're still a member because their membership is paid by the old waste authority, so. It's an interesting event. So is there any question on that one? If not, somebody wish to move the correspondence, Richard? Any discussion on Richard's motion? Okay, now we'll call the question those in favor. Posed, seen none, it's carried. Thank you. Moving on to our audited annual survey report, most probably important document that we have tonight. And Kim was kind enough to forward it to us so you could have a chance to go over your numbers and look at.
And this will really lead into our committee of the whole meeting and where we're at. Town overall, you can read from auditor statement right through, we're in fairly good position right now. Of course, that will change this year with the amount of investment you're making in the meeting, but it will also come back in the capital side as well, so. Long and short, council really usually kind of focuses on where our surplus was for allocating to this year's reserves. And as you can see, we had about a three hundred fifty thousand dollar cash surplus that will make recommendation to allocate to reserves for this, about some of the projects that you're working on.
Yeah, the other thing that, you know, is kind of interesting in a way is that that amortization, you know, how back in the day, long before any of us were on council, it started in the process municipalities were exempt from amortization. And then they started bringing it in and it really affects a lot of municipalities of, you know, you've got that money that is yours, but yet it's not yours. And cause you've advertised that equipment and that your assets and and as a municipality, you can't, you can't do anything with it. So I mean, I don't, I still have problems with that one, but.
Yeah, and really at the end of the day, when you're looking at our financial statements as a whole, you look at this page five here, really takes you to our accumulated surplus because that includes our, basically our assets of our community, that twenty million dollars. Is essentially where we're, where we're at as a community for. And going through as a municipal indicator is, as Tom said, with your with the depreciation of, you know, your assets, if your value of your, the surplus of your community drops every year, then that becomes a pretty good indicator of your municipality not doing well. One of the things that was brought to my attention early on is where we're at, we should be adding a million dollars worth of assets to our community to be sustainable over the next twenty years. And I was really surprised, you know, because when you're trying to save money and spend it responsibly, trying to spend a million dollars a year is quite a task to do it, to make sure that it shows up in your accumulated surplus as a, as an asset.
But that was, that was an auditor that told you that.
Yeah, that's right. And.
And if they had their ways, you would have so much money put away in reserves. And again, not to say that that's a wrong philosophy, but it definitely is a hard philosophy, especially if you're not, you're trying to just exist.
Yeah, and that's what really helped with past council as well is, is instead of, we took, we took a mixed approach of of a baseline reserve. How that is, you guys know that's been about that two and a half million dollar mark, try to be our baseline and started at about a million and a half and it's grown to two point five. But the other side is taking that million dollars, you don't have to invest it in reserves, you can also do that water and sewer upgrade and add a lift station or rebuild the road. And that also becomes your asset that helps take that twenty million dollars in assets up every year. So that, we took that mixed approach, which has worked and has kept us in a pretty decent financial position overall.
I always refer to it, if you're home, if you never do any work on it. Pretty soon, everything needs fixing, so you have to keep at least doing at least one thing minimum a year to keep that house.
And yet, on that one though, we, I agree a hundred percent with you, otherwise you have this dated old, you know, item, but you know, whether it's a home or a vehicle or whatever, but on the other hand, sometimes the the way the price of the land and appreciations on your home has gone, sometimes someone may go, holy mackerel, there's been quite a bit of increase in the value. And so that's partly the same as ours, as financial, is where is that happy medium of what you spend, what you put in your back pocket for reserves and and I think that, you know, unless you've got other questions on this, it shows that council has tried to move through with the advice from administration in a very positive way, but.
I agree.
Is there any, any questions on any other areas that, like Kim says, you know, next week when we have that meeting, is it next week?
Yeah, it's next week, on the sixth.
Then, you know, if there's any other questions and thoughts on it, we can bring it back, but we have to pretty well move this so that they can set that.
Yeah, once you set the, this, then it allows us to take that money from and allocate it to surplus and that through your direction and committee of the whole, but it gives us a starting point, so. The only other portion of the financial statements that's usually of interest to the public, as you know, is our debt limit. And I'll do the calculations for you for when we do our town hall meeting, but as you can see, we're almost almost ten million dollars that we can borrow. We currently have debt of about four, so we have about five point eight million in available credit. And then on the debt servicing, which is our ability to pay, we have a one point six million dollar debt servicing. We're only getting about four hundred thousand a year, so we have one point two available in debt service. Not that I would suggest we get there, but it does, for the case of large capital projects, give you lots of room for borrowing for things, should you want to wish to do that over over a twenty-five or thirty-year term.
I was actually expecting to see a little more interest that we'd be repaying. When I said one forty-six, one forty-two, I thought it was. That's not too bad compared to.
Yeah, yeah. And the thing to remember with those loans is, once you lock them in, so we have a few that are coming to term at the end, that are, I believe the highest one was eight percent on there. But the ones that we did for, say, the pool, sewer expansion and the industrial are all locked in at a fairly low rate. That's really nice when we're looking at long-term because the last few years, you couldn't borrow money any cheaper than we've been able to.
Yeah, and I can remember, I don't remember if you remember Judy, but there was some loans that were almost double-digit for a period of time and you know, everybody that comes on to council says, oh geez, you know, why don't you go and borrow around at half that price and pay them off, but you can't, you know, I mean. And so anyway, we said fairly well, well, we don't said very well, we said very well financially, but is there any other, any questions on anything else or?
So, and this is just to accept the audit.
Right, you're approving. You're approving them for acceptance for us and for us to post it to the website, which your approval of that then allows the mayor and a councillor, usually we do the deputy mayor signs off on the financials so that we can submit them, so.
Yeah, and then any extras, that's for.
The next, next week's meeting, like that.
The, all of the capital and everything, comfortable.
Okay. Are you? Go ahead. Don't go ahead, you're gonna make the motion?
Yeah, I was just gonna.
Go ahead, hear that?
Yeah, I was, yeah, I'll make the motion to accept the the audited twenty twenty-four audit for financial statements.
Okay, thank you. I'll remove this. Is there?
May I ask, as presented so that Anne can publish on the website, include it in your motion?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, thank you. Any discussion or questions on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question those in favor. Posed, seen none, it's carried. Thank you. And moving on to the library board representative appointments.
Very straightforward. The library sent us a letter requesting and both of them are reappointments. Amanda, for three years is nice because the last time she was appointed, she only appointed for one year just to see how, what that meant. So it's nice to see that she wants to sit for another three years, so they're looking for council approval for that.
Okay, Judy?
I'll make the recommendation that council approves the reappointment of Janice Poli to the Volcomunist Library Board for a three-year term ending April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-eight, and that council approves the reappointment of Amanda Rogers to the Volcomunist Library Board for a three-year term ending April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-eight.
Great, thank you. Any discussion on Judy's motion? Right now, call the question those in favor. Posed, seen none, it's carried. None, it's carried. Okay, now moving on to the undeveloped lot purchase.
So everybody's had a chance to read the report. I've been trying to keep you up to date with the happenings of this as they go along. Panic has acquired the land and has supplied us with a purchase agreement. Everything goes to the terms that we had, we had asked. As you can see, the total cost for the thirteen lots were dealt to thirty-five hundred dollars, eighteen dollars per lot, which, but that also includes all the legal fees plus the registration of title, all of the transfer. So a fairly reasonable price for those and hopefully with this as it moves forward, which should allow us to either develop it ourselves or encourage a developer to come in and and finish that chunk of road and be able to put a development agreement on it, so, which is something we lacked for fifteen years out there, so. So it's very positive.
Richard?
I'll make the recommendation that council approve the purchase of thirteen undeveloped AKID lots from RMAC Investments Limited, specifically lots four to nine, block eight, plan zero nine, one four, one seven, eight, and blocks forty-three to forty-nine, block ten, plan zero nine, one four, one seven, eight, at the cost of, at a cost not to exceed forty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-six cents to be drawn from the contingency reserve and direct the CAO to execute the purchase agreement on behalf of the town.
Okay, great, thank you. Any question on Richard's motion? Hearing now, call the question those in favor. Posed, seen none, it's carried. None, it's carried. Okay, moving on to, excuse me, written community reports, this one from the Flying Club. It was a question, excuse me, and I had on it about that. It said about the taxes in Reers.
The motion to delegate authority might wait to act on behalf of the Flying Club as the airport operator with regard to vacant hangar delinquent property taxes.
Yes.
So what they've done is they've appointed Mike to work with us to try to get a hold of the owner of the hangar.
Oh, cause I, I didn't think that our leasehold agreement had anything to do with the taxation, it would have.
No, well, and see, the lease is, they cover, because the town owns it, we don't have title to it, we can't put taxation on. So the lease pays taxation. The lease is essentially, as in there, that the rent, the annual rent is the assessment at our tax rate. So we have one hangar up there that because the fellow passed away, we've been applying to rent at the taxation rate, but nobody's been paying him. So this is just going through the motions to try to find, because again, it isn't like tax recovery, if they stop paying taxes, all we do is cancel the lease. We have no means of recovering if you tax recovery. So we're trying to, yeah, so we're trying, we don't, if at all possible, we don't want to breach the lease. If we can get them to clear things up, if not, and again, the one specific with Oklahoma, we could go into closed session, but the fellow passed away. And so the family's been dealing with it, and they haven't forwarded much information on it because it was all through a company name, so.
Okay, well, that's fine. I just.
Yeah, I think the wording of it was a little bit off because they're not actually trying to clarify property tax or anything, they're just trying to help us locate people that can get us in the right direction so that we can get the lease cleared up.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions?
They're dealing with a person that's living in, I thought that was on here, now I don't see it. Cause I know I read it, but now I don't see it. Anyhow.
You're dealing with what, three?
The fellow that was staying in the camper over there.
Okay, any other questions or concerns on the, on that one? If not, then we'll move to the special MPC meeting minutes.
Good news?
It is, and I'm at the port of footings the other day, and so we've already started on the process.
And for anybody that doesn't know the background, this is just putting the weighter setbacks to make the buildings align, which with what's existing out there.
And Bob had huge. It was, it was kind of nice because you could see them, they were, they, were they, I don't know if they were vinyl or.
Four by eight, I think, because they covered the entire wall.
Oh, is there any? Well, it shouldn't look much different than what is there, is it, because of.
They got garages, oh.
But because of architectural control, isn't it, that they can't do a ton of alterations, can they?
They've done a little bit. I think it's gonna put existing ones. People are gonna like these ones.
They look more modern, stream.
They stayed within the architectural guidelines, but have modernized them.
Okay, that's fine.
Best, best way to describe it.
But I, yeah, cause I mean.
Still rock on the front, but it's a different kind of rock. The siding is a little bit different.
That's good.
It'll really bring up.
The value of the.
And hopefully for the homeowners associations will give them some incentive to possibly update their architectural guidelines to include some of this stuff because there is some really nice products available out to homeowners.
And the first bunch, just, they don't have garages, they just have the carports. And then the next, I don't know.
The next ones, their garages are set back, but the other side, their garages are out front, so they, they're all a little bit different in there. But the idea is to get the fascia of all of the things at the same level, so even if your carport comes up this far, that's how far the next garage comes out door.
That's good.
So it, it looks good and MPC did it. They had a great conversation from what I've heard about these setbacks, especially in a gated community like that, if that's what the owners all in there want.
And then the one for Bob had some, cause I think there's a couple, couple that are a little bit larger and which makes the other one, so they, we had to do not.
Right.
And then so Jeremy here, he said, just a minute, you didn't do that for mine, I want to make sure mine's good. So, you know, it was good conversation and it made everybody wanting to make sure that when they left here that.
They had what they needed.
They had what they needed approved on there.
That's good, you know, and I appreciate the MPC, you know, kind of moving it up because I know they wanted to get going on so they could build them. And you know, and I know sometimes that's, whether we call it the red tape scenario or whatever, it just shows that, you know, you guys are willing to speed the process up if you can and.
Hold a special meeting.
And you have to hold a special meeting for it and, and so it's probably well worth the, the process, so thank you to the MPC for that.
I was just gonna make note, like on one of the outfits that's gonna be building up there, they're gonna, they don't want vinyl siding, it's gonna be Stucco, and Stucco is, wasn't permitted out there, it's just kind of a higher end, because they said, you know, the way the weather is right now, vinyl siding is not there.
Yeah.
Could get hailstruck, things better. You'll see for it.
Okay, Judy?
Yeah, and Bob had just, I thought it was very nice, Bob's gonna let Jeremy get a good start on his, because they don't want to wreck the road with all that traffic going back in through there, so they're working well together, so that was encouraging to hear too, so.
So, no, that's a good sign, so it's a good start, so. Okay, any other thoughts or questions on MPCs? If somebody wished it, Lyle?
Make the motion to approve the committee reports.
Okay, Lyle moves the reports. Any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, call the question those in favor. Posed, seen none, it's carried. Okay, moving on to councillor reports, which are kind of damaged one, with councillor Magnuson, but where you go.
I have, obviously, the airport committee meeting on April fifteenth, special MPC meeting on April twenty-fourth. Those are the only meetings I had, but I just also wanted to bring attention to councils. Our lake posts downtown are kind of tourist attraction, their spaceship up there, and I think they look really, really good. And we're coming into a season where people have garage sales and other things happening in town. And as a great cartoon character once said, it grinds my gears, I, when people tape posts, their posters to our lake posts. Cause sometimes you don't get all the tape off and eventually it's gonna peel off the, the paint on there. And I'd just like to see a bylaw or look into the bylaw, just make note that people don't wreck something nice that we have.
I was able to look into that as well, speaking, after speaking with Lyle, and we can cover off on that in inside of our traffic bylaw because they're not allowed to put anything on any of our signs, posts, anything on the boulevard. And in the past, with our old poles, we obviously didn't allow anything to be hung on those as well. And we were fairly vigilant about taking them down as soon as they went up. We haven't done that as much in the last little while. And so we internally, after Lyle and I had a conversation, we internally also talked about how we can step up our efforts to do that. So, so with, Channing's already started looking into it and reconfirming with our public works crew that if, you know, even on the weekends when they're out seeing that stuff, when we do checks, if they're out, they see that it's well within our rights to pull those down.
We will, and.
Yeah, it says right in, right in our bylaw that they will be removed.
I, I think that we need to, like you said, it really does, you know, even, you know, we had a group that wanted to put those ribbons, purple ribbons, and there's still some that are still hanging around and I, I think that we either need to, yeah, same thing, if they see it on there, Public Works or whatever, remove it and clean off the, you know, the tuck tape that they use. And some of them go along with some googan and spend an hour and clean them off.
And the nice part is they put their phone numbers on there, so if we do have somebody ever take them down, we can get a hold of who put the signs up. Or we have their address usually.
And again, that might be another one that we add to the newsletter, saying just as a reminder that, you know, if you want to put a sign up, put it on your lawn and go from there.
And I had, just one more thing, it's probably gonna happen more after the election tonight. I really have an issue with people, people can express their opinions politically, which is fine, but when they put up flags with profanity by the schools or in residential areas, I don't think that's appropriate because I think it sets a bad example for our children, our students, who's gonna wanna come to a position where people are going after their leaders all the time.
Yeah, and exactly what you're saying too, is, you know, we've got a municipal election coming up in October, so we're kind of leading from one into the next and, and I think you're right, but it's maybe something that, you know, even politely go to them and say, you know, would you kindly move here?
Channing, Channing has been out and I do know that a couple of them, I think was unable to talk to a person, are receiving letters because a few of them actually have profanity on them, which is, we address that in our bylaw as well for signage.
I'm glad you told me that. Last summer, there's a fellow parked at the pool and he had about every curse word you could have about political. And I said, you know, I really don't appreciate you being around these kids with that.
If they're attached to their vehicle, we don't, we cannot do it in the bylaw. It has to be attached to fence, a fence outside of a property or on the outskirts. You can, you can have the sign on the inside of the house, you can't have it on the outside of your house if it is deemed offensive or.
Sitting on a public road.
Yes. So the ones that are faced out on balconies, fences and the ones that you've seen around town, I do know that Channing's been out to talk to them. And we'll get some compliance with that.
Sounds good.
Funny enough, all of that stuff, if you're looking it up and somebody is asking you about it, it's in our traffic bylaw. First, because that includes the stuff for signage.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Devoe?
I actually haven't had many meetings since our last one and have a few comments from individuals. Just expressing the town, how good, how good the town looks, how it's coming, things that are happening. Some people excited about a new campsite, so. So it seems like everybody seems to be more happy. They don't really gripe at me too much, so it seems like things are going pretty good. That's about it.
Okay, any questions for Richard? No, thank you. Councillor Sanderson?
On April fifteenth, I attended the golf course AGM. There was two Tyler Wolf funding stepped down.
What did he?
After eight years, and I think it was Chad Purdy, I'm not sure.
I think Chad's still on.
Is he still on? Who do you, I couldn't remember, and I couldn't find my notes, but anyhow, Jackie Maisy and Jerry Halyer are on the board. So it was a, it was a decent turnout, so. And April sixteenth, I attended the volunteer appreciation supper at Ward's, and it was a really good turnout for there. They had tacos, which was something different, so it was kind of nice. April seventeenth, we had our FCSS meeting at five o'clock. We were awarded two summer student grants, so that's exciting, we get two full-time ones, so that's our summer. Cause we're doing a lot of camps and that within the other villages too, so it really helps to have more people to assist. We moved into clothes at five eighteen and out at five thirty-seven. We had two motions, one. Uh, we moved into polls at five eighteen and out at five thirty-seven, we had two motions, one for Dawn to proceed as disgusting polls. Second motion was to send letter of support for RDM funding in the amount of twenty-five thousand from county, to the county, town, and the villages. I received, uh, I had to get champions all quick, cause they had their meeting, and, um, they have consented to, to support that, which will be coming up, I imagine, in our. You got my, you didn't get my email? I thought, geez, that's funny, Kim hasn't responded back.
I've got an email from, did you send it from your town?
No, I sent it from my, I knew you just sent, I have the.
Do I have a question? Uh, we can figure that.
Yes, we'll do that, I'm sorry.
No, I haven't.
Okay, I will make sure I go back home and send that right away. Um, we discussed, uh, social needs assessment, government says they're requiring this, I think by twenty-twenty-seven, which we're really trying to go back and see what. Cause it's gonna cost a lot of money, and these little places like Staley's and Clarisville and Waltons can't afford to put that kind of money into special, you know, into these needs assessments. So, um, we'll see what happens there, some of the larger centers have started theirs, and we're wondering if they could get a, you know, a template going, and then it wouldn't cost the villages and small towns an arm and a leg. So we'll be checking on that. We approved, we amended some policies just to bring the wording up to where it should be, and, um, that was it for that. And then April twenty-fourth, we had the special MPC, and I have a mark, somebody should meet each one.
Sounds good. Any questions for Judy? Yeah, no, thank you, I've got SEWA, SEWA, and SEWA. Um, had a SEWA special executive meeting, and, um, out of the executive special meeting, we came up with a list of questions to ask this Global Green. And we have a meeting tomorrow morning with them to hopefully get some answers on that. Uh, then I went to South Grove's meeting and, um, last Thursday and representing SEWA. And, um, I had said earlier that I, I'm not a very good reader and apt liver, and so I got mixed up in my paperwork and have a bit of a problem with my presentation. But, um, the executive director, Peter, felt that it was the best presentation that they've had, so I thought, holy mackerel, this is good, I hate to see some of the bad ones. But anyway, it went very well, uh, was very well received by the majority, I mean, there are some that still, like I said, have drank some Kool-Aid, and, uh, it's not, it's been, it's been tainted. So, um, hopefully, uh, we can get some of the corrections out there. I, I find it very difficult, and, and I think that's just a sign of the times to a degree, is that all this information's out there and it's available to anybody, whether it's SEWA or the towns or the counties or the, whatever. But some of us never read it, or if we do read it, we don't read it right, you know, and it's, we're kinda come away tainted, but like I said, you know, I wonder where the, did you read the same piece of paper I did? And then on the Friday, we had the, 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 the meeting with the SEWA board. Um, the Newell County, Newell Solid Waste is working really hard to get this, uh, two documents, the, uh, lease agreement and the document for the waste. And so I had a discussion today with one of their, from the, the waste, um, from their solid waste group. And, uh, they're starting to go out and pound the payments to get the tonnage that they need, so. Um, we had a bit of a discussion at the general meeting too about, um, you know, they're gonna call it clustering. So there'll be theoretically a cluster of, um, SEWA members in the south that are proposing to build a facility. And then there's a cluster in the Newell County or the Newell Regional Waste, and then the one up in Banff, Camor, um, group. And, you know, and so they're hoping that the, the information that, that comes back from, um, Newell County, Newell Solid Waste, we can just take, again, like Judy said, that same template. And just use it and then, you know, tweak it and modify it a little bit, cause the Camor, Banff group have other issues that we don't, you know, for some of the other ones. Because they have that tourism number that increases and increased, almost doubles their, their garbage for that period of time. So you need a facility that can handle the total year, but yet, so do you build, you know, more storage, or do you have an extra train that you bring on, you know, to, to handle that load and then cut it back? So, you know, they're gonna have some tweaking to do, and then same with the south, but, uh, but anyway, it, it is very, it's looking very good. Other than, like I said, there are some that still believe that, uh, you know, saving eighty to ninety percent on tipage isn't the way to go. And you go, what rock did you crawl out from, but obviously they've got more money in their pockets than what they think, but, cause I mean, I would think that if you can save eighty percent on your tipage cost, why wouldn't you at least come to the table and listen or look? But, so we're hoping that this'll change, but, anyway, so those are the three, I, like I said, I have a meeting tomorrow with, and then we're, we're meeting with this Global Green. Um, this Ruben, he, um, um, has purchased a piece of land in BC, so the last couple meetings we've had with Ruben has been on BC time, which is kinda nice compared to having to try and accommodate, you know. Meeting in the middle of the night with him or meet early in the morning with us, so. But, uh, the, uh, Sean from, uh, the, um, Newell Waste Authority, he's looking forward to going and looking at the city and, and seeing what they do. And they've taken their engineering with them, so they can, um, have an idea of how the process works and, you know, but it is, it's looking good. I mean, they're, they're probably a month and a half, two months behind, you know, they, they had, had hoped that they would, um, have the signed agreements. But, um, the, the lawyers are like engineers, they have a tendency to want the work, but once you give it to them, they decide that it's, you know, they want every I dotted and every T crossed before they move on. So hopefully, anyway, and then Wednesday night, I have a, a Waste Authority meeting, which ought to be quite exciting, we have, uh, our audited financial statement. But unfortunately, the auditors that we have, um, do not like to release it a, a minute before the event, so you don't get to read it until that night. And, uh, I think it's time that we sit down with our auditors and say, if you can't release it a week before, maybe we should not have you as an auditor and find somebody else. Because, yeah, I don't think that's, I don't think that's fair to the, the Waste Authority members to not have this information so they can read it over and, you know, question some of the lines, you know. And have administration be able to get the answers, or, I mean, the auditor comes, but anyway. So it ought to be kind of exciting meeting, I think that with, um, too, so. And we're not sure where it's gonna be, because whether we might have to come back to here again, or whether it'll be at the county, because they've had staffing issues at the county right now with people on holidays and sicknesses and, you know, recovering from some surgeries or whichever. And so we're not sure where it'll be, but, so we might be knocking on Karen's door to come in on Wednesday night, but, anyway, that's it for me, unless you guys got some questions? Anyway, if not, somebody wished to move, very cool. Judy? Thank you, any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, call question on the favor, opposed, seeing none, I, it's carried. Okay, moving on to the management report.
As you can see, I was able to finish everything from last meeting except for the committee of the whole, which obviously we need financial statements approved and, uh, everything, so we can, uh, get started, put up, get started. Just about everything's done for the committee of the whole, we're just, uh, doing our models with the O R A right now. So unless there's any questions on that, I can go through to my C A O report.
Okay, thank you.
Worked quite a bit on, uh, the development agreement, uh, with the, the Willows, as you know, uh, from the last meeting, we've got a consultant in place, been working with him. He actually had a development agreement within a couple days back to me that said that they would be willing to sign off on it if, uh, if we're good with it. So I sent it immediately to C plus, so they got it at the end of last week, and I'm hoping to get feedback from them in this week and hopefully have everything ready. We may be able to bring it back to council fairly soon, so that's pretty exciting. Um, working on military calculations and budget for the, uh, committee of the whole, just the budget updates that are done. I've, uh, been working with North and Company for purchase agreement of all of the, uh, tax recovery properties and, uh, helping us with the PAMAC acquisition as well, so. Uh, done those, uh, reviewed the financial statements, uh, reviewed budget updates, uh, met with the flying club for the hangar, uh, concerns, both occupancy, that's what that, that's probably where. You put two and two together, Judy, was I put the occupancy concerns that were brought up, and, as well as, uh, the, the hangar itself with, uh, no one actually taking care of it anymore. Worked with, uh, uh, Channing on, uh, bylaws for the signage information, and that was honestly based on a conversation that Lyle and I had, so. I appreciate him bringing that to us, uh, early so we could get a start on that. And, and again, and they, when there's concerns like that and we can bring them up and dabble through, if we can't find them in our bylaws, it gives us a great opportunity to bring them back to council to, to actually update some of our information. So we're able to, uh, address everything that in our existing, and if we don't have any luck getting compliance that way, we'll bring it back to council to, uh, possibly change, uh, and then probably put a policy in place if, if needed. Various of the community members, uh, inquiries were the demolition airport and, uh, the council members were the land purchase and, uh, we had some election, uh, questions and conversations. On April twenty-fourth, I, uh, attended the infrastructure workshop in Bezano, that was the second installment, there'll be one more, uh, sometime this summer. And, uh, again, got a lot of information on that and, uh, really interesting conversations on what could possibly be done. We focused mainly on procurement this time, on, uh, you know, uh, tendering and so a lot of big companies won't even look at a small tender for a hundred thousand dollars, which is really cost prohibitive for, uh, uh, the small community to get anything done. So there was lots of conversations about how not relying on the municipalities to put it together, but whether there would be a appetite for a portal where you could put your job out. And, uh, some of the larger companies could, would then go and put three or four of the jobs together in close proximity. Because there's always been talks about communities working together to do their projects, but administratively, it just never works out to try to do that. Where the other side, where you can just put it up there and, and, and be able to bid on it. And so still got a lot of flushing out to do, but it was really interesting to see some different ideas that were put out there, so. I appreciate council supporting me, participating in that again. My formal meetings, uh, we had our meeting with Wise near Holdings and executed the Glumberian, uh, purchase agreement, so that's all done now. Uh, we're just, we're, uh, working on getting the tools and the template and that from him, so we can, uh, do that work, some of that one ourselves now. North and Company, obviously, the purchase agreements and, uh, the Futureville purchase agreement, uh, they, uh, we did a, told them I signed an amendment, uh, just a quick extension, bring the date back from where they were to the end of the month. And, uh, hopefully they, we'll, we'll find out on closing, uh, and, yeah, and once they do that, as you know, they have the two years to do the, uh, development plan, so. Keep you abreast of how that works out. Uh, the only other thing that I've known, it's not in my report, but, uh, Stu asked me to pass along, is if you've had questions about the campground. They've got the majority of the water, it's super installed now, uh, they will be doing the, uh, all of our portion of the electric bulbs, uh, what we're doing with roads electric, that's all done. Lead time for Fortis was, uh, eight, ten weeks, uh, so, uh, they'll get all of our underground stuff done, everything ready for Fortis to hook on to. So I see that that's done, they'll do roads, and he's hoping that we'll be able to do camping here, uh, he doesn't wanna give an exact date, but, uh, you'll see sooner than later, so. I just wanted to give you an update on it. Uh, he's pushing, he's trying, he's trying to get everything, at least all the ground closed out before the other side of the campground opens, so, which is Thursday.
I see that they surveyed for the poles for the, um.
In the industrial?
No.
Oh.
Out there.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So it's been surveyed, so I don't know, in fact, one hole looked like it had been hired there, so.
Oh, good, yeah, yeah, Stu, he said that they, the lead time to give was their generic office answer, but he feels that they should be able to come in quicker, especially available, so their stuff done, so.
Yeah, I was just, we went for a bike ride today and saw it, and, uh, surveying on that part, I think finished for the Fortis.
So he just asked that I pass that along?
Yeah, no, it looks good, I, I think it's gonna, it's kinda interesting project, I think, even for the staff to participate in, so.
Yeah, they, you know, they put in all the water, it's over eight feet, nine feet, whatever they needed to get their slope, and then, you know, tying on to the existing stuff that's down eleven feet. Why is it so deep, but, so, yeah.
I guess if they run into problems, I think that's the one hole out there that the demolition is from Shawnee, so they may be able to.
To just root it up, they'll root it up. Uh, funny enough, Stu said, cause he ran into a little bit of shale in the first part of the dig in, and then he said the majority of it is actually laid on shale, but it busted up really nice. So it actually made a good gravel, like it busted into small pieces like gravel, he says, gonna make amazing bedding for, for the pipes, so.
It's a cave in the look today, and they're, they're moving right along.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions for Kim? If not, somebody wished to leave, uh, Richard? Administration reports, any discussion in Richard's motion? Hearing none, call questions in favor, opposed, seeing none, it's carried unanimously, so I need another motion, oh, Judy, thank you.
I was leaving with water.
Uh, okay.
Seven forty pound.
Good meat.
Great, thank you.
So it's the others that's still listening.
Yeah.